Ready? Okay. I call the Monday, April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four regular board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Lozinski.
Here.
You're not.
Here.
Vanuken.
Here.
Craft here.
Right.
Here.
Okay. I call the Monday, April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four regular board meeting to.
All right, we're unmuted. We just had a slight technical difficulty with the audio playing back. We should be all set.
Okay, then let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republicans for which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start off with our mission statement. So our mission statement is, we educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives and to contribute to society. And our vision statement is the Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven continuous improvement through our strategic planning process and tangible results. And I welcome all of you, all of our visitors today. So glad you could be here. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Craft, yes. Vanuken.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Lozinski.
Yes.
You're not.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and that moves us right into superintendent's report.
Great. I have some items to talk about, and I'm going to touch on some agenda items, and then we can move into Mr. Hopkins' report. So with spring break happening, we have not had a Board of Education meeting since March twenty fifth, which is actually, yeah.
That's the longest.
Yeah. And so some highlights from the district since then, we had an eclipse. That happened. So, and that was interesting because we did the call the calamity day for that. We didn't have the traffic or packed parking lots as expected. If you recall, a lot of organizations were saying it's going to be gridlock, it's going to take hours to get home and those kind of things. And we also had a sunny day, or sunny enough day, or not sunny, a clear enough day in Cleveland to actually to enjoy it. So that was nice. We did add that one day to spring break. We probably could have gotten away with opening, you know, and running school. However, most of the people who I spoke with, it was a pretty common theme where many people were saying that it was more impressive than they thought it would be. I like really didn't get the full gravity of the whole thing experience, but the other thing that people would say is that they really were happy to be able to enjoy it with family. So technically, yeah, we probably could have opened up and run. However, I think that experience for many of us is once in a lifetime, and you're able to enjoy it with family. So I'm totally fine with extending that one day.
There was a real wow factor.
It was amazing.
It was.
Yeah, but I even checked it. So I checked our clock cameras to see, you know, if we had a whole bunch of cars coming into our lots. I looked at our video cameras and there really was not. I mean, I don't know if there was any or much at all on our campuses. So that was good. Because we were worried. It's like, do we need to activate our custodial crew, you know, if people left garbage or anything? So we're ready to do all that, but it was worked out really well. The next thing to touch on also between this timeframe, we did reach a tentative agreement with our OPSI Union. We're very pleased with that process. They will hold a vote with their membership in May prior to our May twentieth meeting. So if they ratify that agreement, it'll be presented for your consideration at the next meeting, at the May twentieth meeting. Is what it would be. On April fourteenth, the spring fever race was held at Westlake High School. This race is traditionally partnered with our Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast. I could tell you I was cooking pancakes, and what I heard was that there was a line out the door. So it was absolutely packed. What's unique about this year is our Westlake Educational Foundation did get involved in the race as well, and we did help increase participation by fifty percent. Usually there's about two hundred runners. This year there was over three hundred. So I think a fifty percent jump in one year is pretty darn good. So we're very proud of that, and hopefully we can continue to grow that. Also, since the last meeting, our athletic conference and our academic conference for next year has been rebranded branded as the Cleveland West Conference or the CWC. A big thank you to Rob Woods. He was instrumental in this process and even filed the paperwork with the state to ensure that we're able to get the name. So it is official, official. We are the Cleveland West Conference. Also, our Behind the W hit mailboxes in Westlake. There's a copy for each of the board members in front of you. You probably got it in your mailbox also, but you can have a second one. They look great. I really love the way it turned out. One of my favorite things about sending out a Behind the W is different parts of it resonate with different people at our senior citizen events right before Hello Dolly, which also was awesome. And I had, I was walking around talking to seniors, and each one was bringing, and I didn't know it was going to hit the mailboxes right before our senior event, and it did. And so I had people commenting, and one is happy with community services, one is happy with the upcoming new electives. And so it's interesting where people flip through it, and there's something different with that. And also, I did get that letter that I shared with the guys from the grandparents, too. So really, some nice feedback for that. On the agenda tonight, we have Megan Hogan, who's with us, and she is being recommended for a preschool position in our elementary school. Our PKK principal, Mrs. Maurice, is very excited to have Megan join her team. Megan currently is working at Saint Julie Billy Art, but in the Lynnhurst School, so not here in the Westlake one. On the agenda, a couple of agenda items. Well, that's one agenda item. Another one, two foreign exchange organizations on the agenda. Neither one of them have notified us about a specific student. So typically, when a student's going to come, we'll get a full packet and providing the information about the student. This is more like getting approved so then they can go through those steps in order to do that. But one organization said that they do have a host family in line in Westlake who would welcome a student. So those are the two on there. We do have a large purchase in my section for a world language textbook adoption. I want to thank Paul Wilson and Amanda Musselman and our world language teachers for all the time they put into selecting these materials. Last week in this room, they, we had our world language teachers in here, Paul and Amanda, and actually Liz was there, too, along with some parents, so the parents can review the resources and give feedback and ask questions. And I stepped in just for a little bit, but it seemed to be very, those seemed to be a pretty positive conversation.
Good conversation, very thoughtful. Decisions about selection of materials, especially going through high school and, you know, even down to middle school, considering the fact that we do have a number of students who take level one, French and Spanish in eighth grade. Just really well done. And, you know, it's not just the physical textbook itself. It's also the link to what's online and the videos and whatnot. So it all kind of ties together itself, since it's so much is going to be hearing and speaking and all the different components, but it was very, it was well done.
The full package involves all of that online experience for students.
But there is a, there is a physical book that they can use also, but then there is that online component.
So is it the same addition throughout? Or did the high school go?
Amanda's saying no.
Not necessarily, because especially by the time they go to AP, it's a little bit different than especially for students. While there is some, you know, okay, when you take, let's say, French one, then you would go into like French two honors or French three honors, the there's similarity between the books, but then at the same time, if you do go seventh grade French, then eighth grade French, and then you do French one your freshman year, you want to make sure it's not the same book the entire time. And so there was some real thoughtful components to that, but making sure it's not the exact same material over and over for three years.
And I think the parents had great questions, too. And anytime you do that and get that perspective to see what parents looking at or, you know, other folks outside of that are not directly in the field, it's good to hear. So that was really good. So thank you to Paul and Amanda and our world language teachers for doing that. The other thing on the agenda I'll point out is there's a section that is two contracts. One is an agreement with Julie Billy Art, no connection to Megan, but it's for services. And but the one I want to point out is Blue Technologies. Blue Technologies, they're our copier provider, and this is not, we are up for a renewal with them. Probably this summer, Todd, is it? This is not the renewal. This is simply just a contract license for Paper Cut. And Paper Cut's a software that we use to manage and kind of watch over our copy, how many copies and different kinds of things like that. So just to be clear, it's not a renewal of the entire copy contract, but it's just that particular one. But we've been really happy with Blue. We switched over. We had Xerox and their Konica and AltA, and the machines really have been good. I want to close my report with some good news. Every month, we send both internal and external newsletters. The internal newsletter is called the Around the Schools, and our external newsletter is called the Key Communicator. My assistant Dana Hoffman, she authors these new newsletters. Now, I want to point out with Dana, too, she also has a degree in this, too. I think it's a degree in PR and communications, and she does a really nice job with it. But just last week, at the Ohio School Public Relations Association, at their conference, she received three awards, and they're in front of me here. Two awards are for, two of the awards are for the Key Communicator, which is the extra newsletter, and one of these awards is for our internal Around the Schools. So when you look at the hardware she came home with, show that for the folks on TV. We're really proud of what she does, and she puts a lot of time in there, and she's very talented, and it's just really nice to have her be recognized. So that will conclude my report, and then if there are any agenda items you want me to talk about during my recommendations, please feel free to ask.
She might need a new shelf for some of the awards.
Oh, you know what? She came back. She's like, I think we need to put in subject for this and this. She has a plan for next year, and I may have to get her a new bookshelf.
Okay, Mr. Hopkins, treasurer's report.
Thank you very much, Madam President. At the last meeting we had, we the state representative, Brian Rose Sweet, was kind enough to submit a recognition through the State House regarding our auditor's award with distinction. Since that meeting, we received another one from Senator Matt Dolan in the Ohio Senate. So I did want to thank, publicly thank Senator Dolan, as well as the President of the Senate, Senator Huffman, who had given us this recognition regarding what they have as honoring the Westlake City School District for tremendous attainment of the Auditor of State Award with Distinction from the Auditor of State Keith Faber. So thank you very much to the Ohio Senate and specifically Senator Dolan in recognizing our.
Congratulations.
You're going to need a new shelf, too.
No, no, we're good. We're good. The, I did want to touch on just a couple other things. One, I am looking to present our five-year forecast at our May twentieth board meeting. So we are going to have a finance committee meeting. We're shooting for May ninth, the afternoon of May ninth, where we can go over the forecast beforehand. But, you know, yes. And no major surprises at this point, as I've been working through the forecast already. You know, we're kind of positioned where we thought we were, and as we've planned through the school year and through negotiations. So that's a good point there. Honestly, beyond that, things are rolling well through the end of the school year. We're positioned well moving forward. So at this point, I have nothing else other than my resolutions, and I'll go over those in detail when we get there.
Okay. Okay, at this point, we have our hearing, our first hearing of the public. And I don't see anybody coming forward, so we are going to move along to the approval of our past minutes. Everybody has had a chance to read them, and I'm going to ask if there's any additions or corrections.
I have a question.
Yes.
I missed, I missed one of them. So should we, we split it up, or can I just say yes to both?
So because this is one, this is just affirming that the minutes, you can say yes. There's nothing wrong with that. But if you'd prefer, we can separate them out and have you abstain.
Well, that's good.
Okay.
Okay, gather.
Yeah.
Okay. At this point, everybody in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. They're approved. And at this point, then we will go into your treasurer's recommendations, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you again, Madam President. Before you have a couple of recommendations, I'd like to touch on a couple of them specifically. The first one you have is our tax rate resolution. Annually, the Board of Education is required to pass a tax rate resolution if we would like to collect taxes on the year going forward, and I really hope we do want to do that. You know, a couple pieces that I will point out is this is not our effective millage, okay? This is your total millage or your voted millage that is out there right now, and that's where that total of sixty six point one six mills. Our millage went down. The overall millage went up. And I'll explain why. If you remember, it was really about a year ago in, after we passed the last tax rate resolution in April of two thousand twenty-three, in May twenty of twenty-three, the Porter Public Library passed a new tax law. They did a replacement and an additional piece, I think it was point six mills. So they moved from, I believe they were two point eight to three point four mills as their voted millage. And so Porter Public Library is a school district library. While we don't have direct control over day-to-day operations, we are their taxing authority, and the Board of Education appoints their board of trustees. So it does show up on our tax rate resolution. But for us, our bond millage, I'm sorry, our bond retirement fund millage did decrease by point one mills. As we continue to have some overall growth in the community, new construction, we are able to reduce our bond retirement millage. So that went down slightly. I think last year we were at that three point four five, so we're seeing that slight reduction to the three point three five. But that's a tax rate resolution. If you have any questions, please let me know. But again, I would love for you to approve it so that we can continue to collect taxes. The next one, B, we are asking, working with our business manager, Mr. Kosevar, and transportation director, Adam House, we are asking to go out to bid through Ohio Schools Council for two additional buses. C, I am asking the Board to transfer funds. This is two transfers, both from General Fund to PI. The first one, we spoke about at our last board meeting. This is the manuscript debt that we did. This is internal borrowing that we did. And the nice thing that I can tell you is through that first five years of this issue, we accrued interest of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and forty-nine cents. It was assessed and run at three percent over that time period, and it was decreasing as we had hundred thousand dollar payments on an annual basis. If we would have financed through a outside party, a bank or bond or something of that nature, we would have paid this interest to somebody else. Okay, money off our books gone. In this case, we financed through ourselves through this manuscript debt, where we're able to borrow against the bond retirement fund, and we're able to pay the interest back to ourselves. The interest initially goes back to the bond retirement fund. By law, interest from the bond retirement fund gets credited to General Fund. And now I'm asking the Board to put this interest back to PI where it was paid out of. This will really give PI a zero, zero cost of borrowing that money over the first five years. We'll do the same thing again five more years from now. But as we have the five hundred thousand dollar remaining on that note. That's the first piece. The second piece is, as we have been very pleased with the opening of our season of baseball, softball, our new fields, new infields, turf infields, reworking irrigation systems, some work in the outfield, foul lines done, some fencing fixed, new dugouts, dugout accessories. We were able to do a lot of work over there under the authority of the Board. The Board issued two resolutions. The first resolution was allowing us to enter into contracts up to one point nine five million dollars. I'm sorry, one point nine million dollars. The Board additionally passed a second resolution, allowing us an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total authority of two million and fifty thousand dollars. As you can see, our final number that we charged to PI for this work came in at one point nine five one. There were a few other little things that are outside of that that we charged to General Fund, some tree removal, some signage, low-cost items in the project, but really, the project came in right around that one point nine five million dollar mark. We paid for it out of PI, and I'm asking the Board, as we planned through this entire process, I'm asking the Board now to make the transfer official from General Fund over to PI to reimburse PI for this expense. And then D, I have some then and now certificates. Please let me know if you have questions regarding any of them. If it so pleases the Board, I would ask that we do letter A separate, and then B through D together if it's acceptable.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve treasurer's recommendation five A?
So, second.
Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Hopkins. Do you know, as it relates to the inside village, what is still potentially available out there? That we have the five point eight as part of the overall ten millage that's split between us and other folks?
Yep.
Do you have a chance to know how much offhand it might be available?
You know, I apologize. I keep it on my desk because this is a question I get asked annually or so.
Yeah. Boy, you can.
The, I can get it. I think it's sitting around point nine mills right now. A point eight or point nine mills. That's currently unassessed inside village. Specifically, what Mr. Vanuken is speaking about is there's two types of millage, and you see it here on the tax rate resolution in the board agenda. We have inside millage, which is ten mills. Inside millage is called inside millage because under the Ohio Constitution, local governing bodies get to assess ten mills without voting, the vote of the public. So that's inside the Constitution. We refer to it as inside village. Anything else is outside millage, outside of the Constitution, which then goes to a vote of the public. So originally, that ten mills would have been allocated to different taxing authorities.
Could you explain what those are?
So in, in Westlake here, so in order to be able to utilize inside millage, you have to assess the same millage in all taxing authorities, okay? So for instance, if you're the county and the county wanted to increase their inside millage, I frankly don't know what their inside millage is right now. This is just hypothetical, but if they wanted to increase every community in Caga County would have to have that available millage. They can't have, well, I collect this millage in this community and this millage in this community and this one over here. So in, so they all have to overlook. So for Westlake schools or the city of Westlake, the city and school district overlap in our boundaries exactly. So we both share in that inside millage. You also have the county that shares into that inside millage as well.
Just those three.
I'd have to go back and double check. You could potentially, you could have Port Authority, which is a separate entity or Metro Parks, and I would have to look into those specifically, but they really unfold into the county as well. And so what happened is, at some point, I've had wonderful conversations with our former attorney, Rick Maniloff, who was with Squires and has since left. He now works for the county. At some point, Westlake City Schools reduced their inside millage, and so that left some unclaimed inside millage, and then the city of Westlake also reduced their inside millage, which left, which currently now between the two of us, leaves some unclaimed inside millage that's hanging out there. Under state law, and I'm not advocating this in any way or recommending it, but under state law, inside millage can generally be claimed by a vote of the governing body. So but it would be assessing additional taxes without a vote of the public.
And we looked at that last year, and we.
I bring it up earlier.
I know you do.
We discussed the number.
We discussed it last year, and we decided it wasn't worth the aggravation.
Yeah, I think we already.
But I'm glad you bring it up every year. That's good.
Well, it's good to know just the the potential dollar. It's like point nine, but that translates into.
Well, so right now, a mill in the community generates, we're going to roughly estimate it at one point eight million dollars. So, you know, it's like nine or even point eight, something like that. You could bring in a significant amount of money pretty quickly.
I'm just curious as to, do you know when they reduced it?
Unfortunately, Mr. Maniloff couldn't determine exactly when. But I'm gonna say, it's been a while. It was not in recent history.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I don't remember it in
No.
a hundred years that I've been here, so.
At least I would say the school district was not in recent history. The city might have dropped it when they did another passed another. I remember here something they passed another tax issue, and part of the agreement was if this passes, we will reduce.
I just can't imagine why the schools would have would have reduced it, but would have led them to do that.
Yeah, I could not tell you offhand.
Big windfall from somewhere.
If you notice, there is an option.
Next year, next year, we'll discuss again when you bring it up.
Sure, I will.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Vanuken.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Lozinski.
Yes.
You're not.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And you're fine with the other three being grouped together, then?
I am, if it's acceptable.
Okay, is there a motion to approve treasurer's recommendations five B, C, and D?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments or discussion?
What question on the then and now for the school resource officers? Is that for the full year?
No, our full year agreement with the school resource officer is roughly I want to say eighty-eight thousand, but we'll say ninety thousand.
Just making sure.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Baseball, softball fields, excuse me, are finished. We're not waiting for anything?
Grass to grow, but.
Yeah. Grass to grow, and the watering system.
Irrigation is good, all the punchless items that need to be touched out have been.
Awesome, thank you.
And only two point six percent of the budget.
Original. From the original of the one point nine five. No, I'm very pleased because what we were able to do when we had talked initially at that one nine, we were going to look at reducing some additional pieces, including possible irrigation, things like that. I'm very pleased at the number that it finalized in. It was a lot of work of Mr. Kosevar specifically, working with our vendors, and I think if you have not had the opportunity to go out and look at our fields, I'm gonna I'm gonna pick on our wonderful reporter here, Evan Gallagher. If you not had the opportunity to go out and take pictures of the field, and I'll put them in your publication. It's fantastic. They've turned out beautiful. I have the unique opportunity to visit a number of baseball fields in the area, and these are really top-notch, one of the nicest fields, high school fields that you will be able to visit. Dugouts turned out fantastic. We were able to do a very nice job of matching the brickwork to our high school. They look like they belong there. It's not something that stands out. It's not something that was just afterthought. They look like they belong the whole time, and I think Mr. Kosevar and as well as the coaches who were involved. As well as the coaches who were involved as well, uh and um and getting advice on this process.
Don't forget to take pictures of the softball field too.
Absolutely.
That's all the great work and Dr. Goggan, uh thank you for sending those emails of appreciation. That uh as you see, yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, just to touch upon the softball field, I think we've used the softball field more times this year than we did our entire season last year. So it's being put uh to good use and the JV just won eleven to ten.
Wow, eleven to ten.
I don't have baseball in my game changer.
Oh, game changer, okay, I don't know if you're texting.
I have a vested interest, uh my daughter's obviously playing for Westlake and my niece is the centerfielder for Rocky Brothers. There was a family dynamic happening.
A bit of bragging. That's good.
Okay, anyone else? Roll call please.
You're not?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Fanuken?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Dogg and secret attendants.
Uh, so I'd like to go through six A, which is our Gibson donate, which are the Gibson donations. Uh, from crumble cookies, Brian Pritchard donated twenty four cookies valued at a hundred dollars to the Westlake. City School District Senior Citizen Appreciation Event at Westlake High School. Doubletree uh by Hilton. Uh Amanda Lassiter in their catering sales department uh donated one hundred cookies valued at four hundred dollars. To the same event, the senior citizen appreciation event. Jessica Philpot donated a Yamaha euphonium to the music department of Westlake High School. Francine Tierpack and family donated numerous speech generated devices, switches. Visuals, AAC equipment, adaptive toys and materials to the speech language department and preschool program at Westlake Elementary. Nathan and Margarita Ware donated five thousand dollars to the Warren Ware Foundation. Uh, co- coach Mike Antonision three D scholarship at Wesley High School. Um, again, with the donations of the cookies, it was really nice, bringing the seniors in and another thing. It's a, I guess it's a praise Dana day, you know, but um Dana organized that whole event too. And it was, it was really, really nice. They they got a cookie and a coffee. Little bit of chit chat and then they go in and see a show, they saw Hello Dolly, I'm gonna tell you that. The drama department just blew it away. It it was a really, really fun show. Um, talking to some of the seniors on their way out, uh they were just so impressed um. Uh with our kids and their talents and organization and everything, so it's very, very nice, uh nice evening. Um, the other resolutions, I went through a few of them. A lot of hiring as we're getting, you know, rounding out spring and getting into summer, if you do have a specific question about any of these. Please let me know, um I wish I would have organized this a little bit better and put, you know, Megan up top, you know, so that we can. Uh uh we would have been able to approve her on her own there. Uh, but letter F, I do want to point out, you do have Megan, who I mentioned is here this evening, but also we have uh Katie Serencioni. And if you recall, you Katie was already here uh at the beginning of the year, uh she was filling and she came and met the board. She was Westlake grad, um and she was filling in as a long term sub. Uh, the person chose not to come back. The position opened and Mr. Woods um uh offered her the position, she accepted, so. Uh, this is now approving her as a full time employee. Other than that, the other thing, oh, to mention, and Luz and I talked about this a little bit in having Jen Williams here. Um, uh, I don't, we we do have um Claudia Vacos taking her Spanish class to Costa Rica. Um, when it comes to these field trips, so if if they're if. That if this company, what is again EFP, I think it EF tours. If they're just doing a a field trip and taking Westlake kids and it's not sponsored by us, but it's just Westlake kids going. We don't approve that. In this situation, this is actually a trip, a a middle school trip and I'd compare it to the DC trip. Where it's it's organized, run by um Claudia Vacos and she's utilizing EF tours. Um, to to do this trip, so. That's uh, did I cover that right, Jen? All right, thanks. Um, but other than that, I I'd like I said, if there's any other item you'd like me to go through, uh please feel free to, but most of them are just rounding out spring and getting into summer. So if you could do five A on its own, then I'm fine with uh.
Combining, okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations six A?
So move.
Second.
Uh, any uh questions or discussion?
Thank you, as always.
I can't even imagine four hundred dollars worth of cookies.
I got it.
And they were the good, they're the good double tree, they had them at Taste of Westlake too, they were. Pretty good, yeah.
Because at the Taste of Westlake, I thought their sliders were really good as well.
Yep, so um. Um, okay, roll call please.
Fanuken?
Yes.
Pure not?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations six B? Through six X.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussion?
Uh, I would just like to thank uh. Thank the board, the superintendent for having parents involved with the the books that uh we're getting, I know that. You know, that can be a touchy subject uh these days, but I appreciate the fact that the community was invited and was part of the process.
We feel it's better that way. I mean, we're not hiding anything.
Without a doubt.
It truly thank you to Amanda and Paul and to the entire world language department who work together, because I know this is. It can terribly kind of time consuming evaluating all of the different options out there, even though I know there's less options than there used to be.
And welcome to Megan.
Yeah, did we want to have her stand up and tell a little bit about herself?
Why don't you line up for the podium?
We usually do it.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, so Megan, uh, tell us about yourself and, you know, um. Uh, if you're, what you're excited about coming into Wesley.
Yeah, um, I am New Jersey raised, so I've lived in Ohio for um the past almost six years. Um, I've worked as in the preschool setting, um K to four and now in kindergarten. Um, but I'm really excited to kind of bring all of my experience in towns to Westlake and. Um, I felt so welcomed and um had so many well wishes brought on me already, so I'm really excited to kind of join the team and. And start my school year here.
Wonderful, thank you and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Did you get a tour of the school, the elementary school?
Yeah, good. Good.
You got a great team there. I mean, it's it's really just a a great group of people, you're gonna enjoy it.
Yeah, I'm so excited.
Yes, welcome. Okay, any further questions or discussion?
Nice job for being put on the spot.
Okay, roll call please.
Craft?
Yes.
Fanuken?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Pure not?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and we've come to the uh second part of our hearing of the public, if there's anybody that wants to come forward and. Give us their two cents worth. No one, seeing no one, okay, uh board comments.
Didn't we have a meeting before or after H Westlake?
No.
It was the last meeting was before Tuesday.
We didn't, oh, I didn't put that in, I missed that.
Wow, that's why I couldn't.
Yeah, you're right.
It seemed like it was very well attended.
Yeah.
Did you have any insight, uh ask you?
I don't know how it is.
No.
Food, the food is really good.
Good, there seemed to be a lot of people there, everybody seemed to be enjoying themselves.
Yeah.
The the one thing that I thought was um. Uh, and Lola Wenham mentioned it when I was talking to her and I mentioned it to to Jen Five, and I thought was. Uh, really good suggestion was maybe having, because they just have the one winner and Luca West won. And and they just have the one winner, but it's really tough for some of these bakeries and and places to compete with like a Luca or like with a restaurant.
That's true.
And so maybe next year have a couple different categories, like best restaurant, best dessert, or you know. A couple things so that.
That's a good idea.
It it, we went through and I I mean, you know, whether it was stick to your buns bakery or um top tier cakes. Uh, you know, or that uh that chocolate place that's over in Crocker.
Yeah.
There were so many, there were so many good desserts there that, you know, it's a shame that, you know, and you could really put a category just with them, so.
And are we um all set then to have it next year? To do it on a real process?
I mean, I think that it is, it's gonna, that and I and I saw them talking and I agree, I thought it went really well and it was well attended and and food was delicious. But even as as walking out, you know, Jen was saying, you know, we have things that we're working on for next year as well, so there, they have some thoughts.
Good.
Was a. It needs to be. And thank all the local vendors for coming out. Um, and I will, I will say that my wife had the uh. Oh, one of those little, little, they look like little um cabbages.
Brussels sprouts.
Brussels sprouts from. Uh, the brewery over on.
Sibley.
Sibley Room?
Yes, yeah, she said they were the best one she's never had.
Really?
And we went over there and she told them and had some more, so, yeah, so, so I think it was great that we were able.
They expanded their function.
They have.
There, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
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 Cause he used to be.
Phones, um phones are something, student phones are something in the national press, state press quite a bit. Are you, could you briefly just touch on?
Sure.
Uh, at each of the buildings, uh how we stand on phones? Yes, so that that is, and and that's something that they actually combine that with uh the military seal. Um, and and I don't believe they pass that legislation yet, but we're really confident that that is going to pass. And um, we already have a policy in place, I think it's fifty one thirty six um in our our board policies and. Um, the way it works is um. In the elementary through eighth grade, uh you're not to have them out in class and and. I think they're said, they say keep them in their lockers, but very likely they could be in the kid's bag, but I think. Do you guys do it mostly if they don't, if you don't see them? Um, but. So they're they're not using them in the high school, it's instructional time. And so during instructional time, you'll see kids in the hallway with them, there it's more flexible. In in the high school than it is in the lower grades, but K through eight, we have less of a problem with it in the elementary school because fewer kids. Pass, the kids still have them in the elementary, but I fewer kids than when you get to the middle grades. Um, but they're not to be in the classroom through eighth grade. Gotcha, and uh from the community, from families, I do not hear of any. Um, complaints uh ab- above uh the policy here at Westlake City Schools. Any, anything that you hear from families that dislike our current policy? No, I mean, I think nothing's ever universal, right? No, nothing's ever a hundred percent, but but I think um. I haven't had any of those rise to me, but I will say. That on our, just the the last um Alliance for High Quality Education call. That we had that and they report a lot of the state items to us and conversations that are happening. Um, but parents in general um support not having. The devices active inside classrooms and and I think.
All class and through high school.
Um, I, it's probably less up there, but in general, parents don't want their kids to be in school on their phones.
True.
And and so that's a general theme, like I said, nothing passes a hundred percent with the the general public. But an overall theme is that most parents would prefer they're engaged in class instead of looking at their screen.
Yeah.
Um, as I pass some of uh our properties, for example, at Holly Lane. Uh, we still have uh, when I say we, I mean more so as a city and a community. Uh, uh, speed signs, those types of things. Should we take any leadership with regard to eventually?
Question, you mean like school signs, like a school?
Absolutely.
Isn't that the city's property though?
And that's and and that's what I would assume, I wanna, I wanna confirm that, but do we, should we take a lead, say, as citizens of Westlake to say, hey? These aren't necessary anymore, do we take those down?
They can just go clean down.
They don't still have the crossing.
No, but they had that.
Um, I saw recently the new uh OHSA divisions for at least football just came out. Uh, it looks like we're the same.
Same, we stayed the same in football.
Uh, have they announced any of the others or is it just football that? Okay. When that if.
For all the folks.
Okay, when that information comes out, can?
I'll put it in the update.
What we are currently, what we're going to. Okay, thank you.
I believe staff appreciation is next week and I know um. Many times we've uh as a board, we've uh stood outside of buildings or we've uh walked the schools. Um, I unfortunately I'm going to be out of town next week, are there any board members that may have an opportunity to?
I'd be happy to do that.
I would too.
All right. Brad and I will coordinate, cause I was gonna say, you you're heading out of town.
Uh, on the twelfth.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be more, uh more than happy to do it.
Thank you, thank you.
Sent you some emails.
I had the opportunity to hear the Lee Bernison Middle School Jazz Band on Saturday, they played at Saint Latifloss. Church and.
And why did they perform?
Uh, they did it last year and I uh and they just came, um, I don't know who, how it. Who started it, if they were invited or if it was at their suggestion, but um Mr. Fidali. Uh, is the conductor and they were. Absolutely wonderful, people that were sitting at a table with me said. If they didn't know the age group of the kids, they would have thought they were high schoolers. I mean, they were that good, there's so, there's so much talent uh in our music. Uh, department, so um. Just wanted to mention how enjoyable that was. Um, are we gonna talk about canceling next week's meeting then, or is that just something you'll do on your own?
Well, that's something I can do with your permission. Um. I. President Lozinski and I were speaking before the meeting uh regarding uh next week, the, we have a work session scheduled for the sixth. Um, and because of the way things worked out with the eclipse and and things like that, we'd have a meeting a week from now and then two weeks later on the on the twentieth, so. Uh, if it's okay with the board and and you direct me, I'm happy to post the cancellation for the sixth.
Is that fine with everybody if we cancel next week? Okay.
Fine, but how many students are gonna miss out on coming to a meeting and getting their uh government uh class?
Isn't government first? Oh, well, they have.
I think my daughter has to.
They have May twentieth, last time.
Otherwise, she's gotta go to a city hall.
We're joining us on the twentieth.
I told her to, you know, go to a planning commission meeting, those meetings are.
Um, if something does come up. Please.
Well, it's our work session, so. And also on May twentieth, um both John and Joe are going to be out of town. So it's imperative that uh the three of us are here, so we have a majority.
That's also the retirement?
Yes.
I am in town, so I will.
Okay.
I'll be here.
Okay, thank you. And uh, that's all I have.
I'd say another big thank you to the uh water department and. Drama department. They sounded great, they really did. So, I only got to see one of the uh shows, but I've heard that both of them, uh the leads did very, very well.
They really did, it was amazing, I got to see both the casts perform and. They were great, I mean, it was really cool, and then also Dr. Goggan made in a, you know, special appearance.
Yeah, also, a little shout out.
I I was sitting, I'm like, oh, that's what Brad's talking about.
Uh, a couple of things, uh Joe and I uh competed in the Westlake Run, the four miler, you left me in the dust. By far, I think you, you know.
You have need replacements though, so don't.
No, but we'll go with that. But no, it was a great turnout and it was great to see all the folks there, both inside the school and outside, I didn't get a chance to stick around for. The pancakes, I had to get to my son's rugby, Westlake Rugby uh game, but um it looked like a great turnout. Um, a couple of other things, uh softball team had a nice fundraiser. Um, the rug rugby team is really cool to watch, if you guys haven't had an opportunity, uh Mr. Pace down at DIS has started a. Fifth and sixth grade rugby team, so they've got two teams going, last year they started it uh for the first year it was one team, now they got. Enough kids for two teams, so trying to build it up, it's really interesting and uh. I have no idea what I'm watching, but the games are literally fourteen minutes long, so.
Hey.
You blink and they're done.
Yeah.
But it's a lot of fun and a lot of action.
Do you know if there are plans to continue it into the middle school then?
I'm hoping that they they do and I I. I believe they tried to, but they didn't have enough kids to go up into LBMS. But now with another class that's been a part of it moving up to LBMS, hopefully they can start, you know, a seventh and eighth grade. Uh, team, because that would be great to see that really continue.
Where do they play, Brad?
Uh, let's see. Uh let's see, the first year they played at Ignatius, this year they're playing at Ed's. So Mr. Pace is doing an amazing job with the kids and it's, I mean, it's a, uh it's a game and you know, it's competition, but he is out on the field teaching the kids, um you know, basically as the game is going on. And it's amazing to see the kids reacting to him and uh um they're doing really well, so it's fun to watch.
Thanks for sharing, I, I was aware of that.
So do you think they'll ever have, have the games here then, in Westlake?
Well, it's part of, I, I don't know the whole dynamics of it all, but there's like, it's a league and um it's basically like elementary school up to high school and the first year everybody played at Ignatius, so there were games all Sunday long from morning through the afternoon and uh Ignatius has the football field by their school, but then across the street they've got three or four other fields, so they've got all these games going on. Well, this year they're, they tore up their football field next to the school to repair it. So they moved fifth and sixth over to um St. Ed's to play. So, but it'd be great to get it to Westlake too, if we can, you know, build up our program. Be really nice. And it's fun. It's not just schools, it's uh clubs too. So like there's a West Park Club and um you know, Westlake's there, Rocky River's there. Highland um from Medina County, Medina, they have a team, so it's fun to watch the kids play. So, and it's not that dangerous, from what, you know, we witnessed, you'd think it'd be even more dangerous, it's not, so.
They're more sensitive to themselves not having anything on credit.
Yeah, well, in fact, they do have the, the, they have padded head, headgear if they want, so um that is an option, so. But um a couple of things I wanted to touch upon, um I thought uh there was an issue last week at DIS, I thought Mr. Miller did a really nice job handling that. Um I know that my son, you know, my wife got a call and my son had conversations with Mr. Miller about that, and I don't think we've met since the issue at the high school, and I really want to commend Dr. Goggan and the staff uh for how that was handled. It was uh um amazing to, to see everyone come together. So fortunately, unfortunately, we have situations like that, but I thought it was really nice uh coming together for the schools on both those situations. Um and then I just have one question uh for my fellow board members. How was the CTV uh luncheon over at Lake? What I missed is. Unfortunately, I uh called into service at work and wasn't able to attend that luncheon.
Nice, very nice, and, and a nice tour of the facilities.
Yeah.
It's impressive what they do.
I need to get back with the um uh Mr. Wilson to hopefully uh get over there, because I really wanted to, to make that.
Oh yeah, I think you'd enjoy it.
Definitely, especially with next school year when they reopen.
When they reopen the restaurant. We, in fact, we could make this a yearly thing.
That's a national conversation as well, and with a family get-together over the weekend um with family from really all over uh the country. This, this conversation about um, hey, there's no more shop class. I said, well, let me tell you about our shop class and talk about the, the new fabrication center. Um automotive uh i- is awesome, electronics, um healthcare. Um it, it really is pretty amazing what's going on over there and then, you know, to uh visit uh the restaurant as well and have lunch is, is a is a bonus as well, but just, just super over there, it's wonderful uh program and glad that we're a part of it.
No, without a doubt, and in this day and age, I mean, these are jobs that are out there and they're ready to be filled, so um it's great that we have this opportunity for our students, should they wish to go.
So it's also under new leadership with uh you guys, but did Yaku?
Yeah.
Come and meet me, um he's a
He was great.
Really impressive guy and he's done a really nice job coming in um at a really busy time with the grants coming in and the, the different programmings. So, he's doing well.
We did just get the invitation for their passport ceremony, um if you do have the time, I would encourage you going. If you've not, not been, it's impressive to see where the students end up going um after graduating from the program, and it's usually just the seniors, so sometimes there are some juniors that participate in the program. The ceremony.
Um continuing on that, I was thinking about, you know, specific to the idea of shop uh that you may know that there is a Westlake resident that uh that particular class built um a garage or shed in the backyard of a Westlake resident, so what, what a, what a cool program to be involved in.
And I should also commend uh Mr. Wilson on working on that new healthcare certification that was an update.
Anyone else? Okay, then we move along to board items and we have our second reading of our policies.
It's the same policies, no changes since uh uh they were presented last time. Most are minimal, uh semantic, or just a response to some changing legislation. And if you have questions on them, I can field them, but I think the descriptions are pretty straight.
Okay, so we will um we will approve those tonight.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Okay, so um let's get the motion first. Is there a motion to approve uh board items nine B, the resolution to approve our board policies?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any uh questions, discussion, comments?
We appreciate you taking the time to put them all together for us.
That it? Okay, roll call please.
Kraft?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Fanuken?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Is there a uh motion for a German?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, or shall we get right to roll call?
Wow.
To adjourn at six fifty-seven PM. Kraft?
Yes.
Fanuken?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we are?
Thank you.